There's about six or seven seats over here if people are still looking for some seats. You guys ready?
As ready as I'm ever gonna be.
Okay. Leon, are you ready? All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call everyone to this regular city council meeting of December 16, 2024. Those who are able to rise, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Flaherty?
Here.
No.
Here.
That's Benson.
There. Here.
Thank you.
Uh, those in the back, there's still a few more seats over here. If you guys wanna get comfortable or you prefer standing, that's fine. Just don't worry. Nobody passing out our last meeting here. All right, uh, no closed session tonight. Uh, item five, no presentations. We'll go right into item six, which is city manager comments. I'd like to invite our city manager, Ethan Bander negel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Rin and, uh, council members. Um, so the close of each passing year presents, uh, an opportunity for reflection. Uh, and it's in that spirit, um, as the city council prepares to certify the results for the November general election that I wanted to take a moment to thank the city council, uh, including the three outgoing members, um, for its service, its partnership, and its collaboration with staff to achieve great things, um, for the city, for the Pleasant Hill community. Our committee has had a lot to celebrate the last few years, uh, from the opening of a new public library to the adoption of a new general plan on many other achievements. And I just wanted to thank the leadership of the council. We as staff know there's still more to achieve in the months and years ahead. And so I say to the new incoming newly elected officials, uh, please know that there are dedicated, passionate men and women here to serve. They are committed public servants, all ready and willing to continue to support the city council. Uh, we are standing by, ready to help achieve great things for the community that we love and that we love to serve. Uh, and in closing, on behalf of city staff, uh, I wish to wish, I'd like to wish the city council and the community a joyful, peaceful holiday season and a safe and happy new year. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any of my colleagues having questions to the city manager? Seeing as none, we'll move on to item seven, which is general announcement, uh, comments and reports. Uh, Contra Costa Mayor's Conference was hosted by the City of San Pablo on December 5th. I personally attended, uh, anyone else wanna? Vice Mayor Noack and Councilmember Schuss was there too. And Alan, right?
I was there.
All right, cool. Um, and I think you were under the knife, Tim, or maybe not. For that one, impending surgery. Um, uh, would you like to report out anything, any of my colleagues from that meeting? Oh, okay, we'll close that item. We'll move on to item B. Uh, other meetings, other meetings attended at city? Anyone would like to talk about any meetings that they attended?
I will.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Vincent.
I attended the, uh, Chamber of Commerce Community Impact Partners Gathering at Slowhand Barbecue, uh, the Ken Carlson Holiday Open House, the Rogers Ranch Holiday Boutique, uh, the Wreckin Park Winter Fest. I did bell ringing with, uh, my Rotary Club at Lenardi's. That was fun. And, uh, coming up, uh, on Christmas Eve, my wife and I will be doing, uh, Christmas for everyone. We'll be carving turkeys for that.
Oh, great, thank you. Vice Mayor Noack.
Uh, I just wanted to report out, we did a mock city council here with the third graders from Valhalla. Matt and I did that. Uh, great fun. Those kids just really did a great job. They voted down most everything except for, yeah, I know, strange. Uh, they voted down a four-day school week, which was really strange, uh, but and they voted down vending machines in the school, but they did vote for a science lab. So I, I thought that was, you know, a great, great result all around from, uh, from a bunch of third graders. So anyway, it was, it was really a lot of fun and, and, uh, hopefully we can get some more schools to do it next year because it was, it's, it's always a blast and the kids learn a lot. And a lot of the parents have never been to city council, so that's, that's kind of fun all the way around. And then, um, I spoke at a ribbon cutting at the El Cerrito del Norte Bart Station for new wayfinding signs that are going in all over the nine barrier counties, uh, as a member of the MTC Commission. So we held the first ribbon cutting for that last week.
Great. Councilmember Schuss. Let the, the record show, Councilmember Schuss would have lobbied for a two-day school week.
That age. Uh, I seem to have, I think I accompanied, uh, Councilmember Vincent to just about all the things, uh, that you just talked about, the Chamber event, Mayor's Conference, the Rogers Ranch Holiday Festival, which, by the way, you guys, if you've ever been to that, I highly recommend it. The Winter Fest, and I guess the one thing I did wanna deviate slightly from is to thank the staff for the, uh, holiday event that was last, uh, Friday. Anyway, that was a nice, great event, so thank you, uh, for that as well. So, that's all for me.
Great, Councilmember Flaherty.
My only announcement is today is my final council meeting.
Oh, geez. All right. Oh, no, I wasn't gonna cry yet, okay, but, uh, it's good. Um, and then the other thing, uh, that I didn't attend with, uh, my other colleagues, uh, we, uh, actually, uh, Sequoia Elementary, uh, came and did holiday carols in our lobby, so it was really kind of a joyous time and, uh, all different holiday celebration songs. So it's always the cutest, uh, I believe they're first graders, uh, that they come down and sing a bunch of different songs, so it really kind of warms the heart. And we have a a pseudo Santa Tom that one of our city staff, uh, has a very striking resemblance, uh, to Santa Claus and came around the corner and they all thought that Santa Claus works at Pleasant Hill City Hall, just so you know. Uh, so we appreciate that. All right. Moving on to item eight is public comment. Public is welcome at this time to address the city council on items on the consent calendar or other items not listed on the agenda, but within the council's jurisdiction. Comments are limited to one minute per speaker. You may provide comments by giving a speaker card to Leon at the dais. Um, if you're here to talk about any of the elections or any of the people that are gonna be up here, uh, taking counsel, that'll come later. We have an each and agenda side up for that. Uh, you'll be able to speak at those times, uh, but this is for anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Uh, we'd like to open public comment at this time. Do you have any speaker cards for general public comment?
There are no speaker cards.
All right, we'll close public comment and we'll public comment and we'll bring it back, uh, for the consent calendar, which is item nine. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate council discussion of these items unless requested by a council member prior to the time council votes on the motion to adopt. May I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar with the minutes?
I'll move the consent calendar.
A second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Vincent and a second by Vice Mayor Noack. May we have the roll call vote, please?
Flaherty?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Schuss?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, lying along. Okay, number 10 is our action calendar. Uh, 10.1 is adopt resolution reciting the fact of the general municipal election consolidation with the statewide general election held on November 5th, 2024, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law. Uh, this resolution indicate, am I presenting or are you presenting? You're presenting, okay. I know it's your show. I know you got it. Um, the resolution indicates that Bell Law has officially elected to serve a four-year term as council member for District One. Amanda Sockas has officially elected to serve a four-year term as council member for District Five. Do we have any public comment on accepting the election results for item 10.1 at this time?
There's no public comment.
All right, we'll close public comment. Any further discussion, my colleagues on the council? No further cushion, no further discussion, I will take a motion at this time.
I'm moving item, oop, go ahead.
I have a motion from Councilmember Flaherty and was that a second or?
A second.
And a second from Councilmember Vincent. May we have the roll call vote, please?
Flaherty?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Schuss?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. All right, now that everything's official, we can recognize the outgoing. Um, and I believe we'll start with 10.2 is recognition of our outgoing city treasurer and Andrew Kalanowski. And I believe he's here with us tonight, and I have a certificate to prevent, present to you. And then I'll bring you up to the microphone if you'd like to make any comments, um, if you'd like. You can stand up here and listen to him, or you can hide in the back, or just come on down, or you can walk while I'm, uh, yeah, come on down. It's like the Price is Right.
It does not work.
You can come right up here, yeah, over here. You can bid $1. Everybody's overbid, all those kind of things, you're good. All right. I, Matthew Rin, Mayor of City of Pleasant Hill, do hereby recognize Andrew Kalanowski for completion of an unfilled term as city treasurer by appointment from December 2021 through the certification of the 2022 election and which time he was elected by the voters of Pleasant Hill to serve as the city treasurer for a term ending with the certification, the 2024 election. The conclusion of Andrew's term ends an era of the city treasurer being an elected position since 1962 with the passage of Measure M as certified in the 2022 election. During his term, Andrew served Pleasant Hill residents well by executing his duties, working with the Finance Division Manager and accounting for all revenues and expenditures, maintaining the city's investment portfolio, and working to assist the city council in achieving its goals of maintaining a city that is financially sound. On behalf of the city council, I hereby thank Andrew Kalanowski for his service as city treasurer and wish him well with his future endeavors. Thank you. And if you'd like to make any comments, this is your opportunity.
Yeah, um, just wanna thank everyone I work with. I think Eric's in the back. Eric, where are you?
I'm there.
Um, Ross isn't here, but maybe it'll be recorded. Maybe he'll watch it tomorrow. Let him watch it on the clock, please. Uh, I really wanna thank Ross. Um, Ross and Eric, they've been super helpful in helping me complete my position and assist the city as the city treasurer. And also I want to extend my thanks to Councilmember Tim and Sue. Thank you so much for all you've done to, to help me implement the, um, investment policy and just, you know, try to serve as treasurer. I'll make it short, but I'm always of the opinion that you should lift where you stand. If you want the, the place you live to be the best it can be, participate. So I admonish any of you, if you have the urge, give it a shot, run for a seat. There's, uh, it's always moving and grooving. So anyway, thank you so much for the opportunity.
And Ty, I have something for you.
Get your steps in.
And I forgot to open public comment, but if anyone would like to speak on item 10.2, now is your opportunity. Do we have any speaker cards to say all the good things?
Speaker cards.
Okay, we'll close public comment and we'll move on to item 10.3, which is recognition of outgoing Councilmember Alan Vincent. Um, and Alan, we'll leave you up here at the dais when we, we talk about you and say good things. Um, like any proclamation that starts with whereas, Alan Vincent was appointed to the Pleasant Hill City Council on February 16, 2023. Councilmember Alan considered and voted to approve resolutions, ordinances, and policies that enhance the quality of life for the residents of Pleasant Hill. Served on the interview nominating committee where he identified candidates to recommend to the city council for appointment to city commissions and encouraged all applicants to engage in the community. Participated on the general plan advisory committee first as a planning commissioner, then as a council member, drafting the general plan and associated housing element adopted by the council in 2023. Participated in the public hearing process of transitioning Pleasant Hill, of having at-large elections to district-based elections, resulting in establishment of the five districts that will allow possibility of minority representation on the city council. Alan served on the planning commission from 2016 to 2023, serving as chair from 2020 to 2021. It impacted the look and feel of Pleasant Hill by providing input on zoning, ordinances, amendments, signage programs, residential and commercial development. Alan participated on the Economic Development Committee, providing ideas on programs to help stimulate the local economy. Whereas Alan has a long history of volunteerism, including participation through the Pleasant Hill Rotary Club, Fourth of July Commission, through baseball and soccer associations. Together with his wife Sandy, Alan received the Pleasant Hill Citizen of the Year Community Service Award in 2017. Now therefore, I, Matthew Rin, Mayor of City of Pleasant Hill, do hereby commend Alan Vincent for his dedication to the Pleasant Hill community and his leadership on the city council. Hereby offer the city council's thanks and sincere appreciation for your service. Thank you so much. I'll try to stay in order this time. So we'll open public comment first and then we'll let you close it out, Alan. Is that okay? All right, open public comment on item 10.3, and we'd like to, has provided a speaker card.
Oh, she's got the box packed.
It's going with you.
Yeah, goodness, gonna bury it. For those who weren't here, we had a night where the cards were in the box and we were like, oh, there's no speaker, but the cards were in. That's the inside joke.
Inside joke.
Inside joke, sorry. It's still not funny, but we keep trying, okay? Just, just ask my kids, they're laughing on the inside. Yeah, no problem. Um, all right, we'll first, uh, bring up, uh, Supervisor Ken Carlson.
You are.
It's weird being on.
I've never got to play the button, no, so. Alan.
Yes.
This is, it, it really is like old home week and, and I appreciate that because coming home to Pleasant Hill, uh, and seeing you all is, is truly tremendous. But to recognize you for stepping into my shoes and then doing such a tremendous job, um, was really, really awesome. I had the pleasure of working with you on the general plan advisory committee, um, going through the housing element, the general plan update, um, again, just the tremendous work you've done. I am just really proud, um, to be your friend and to, to be here to support you, but to see you, um, be so successful. Pleasant Hill does have a lot to be proud of over the last couple of years. And, uh, I just look forward to its continued growth and success, but you're a big part of that. And not only just from being on the dais, but being a member of this community and all the work you do out in the community, whether that's through Rotary or supporting Sandy, or, well, let's just have beers next time. But again, I just wanna, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I am not gonna read this, but we too want to acknowledge you for the, the hard work you've done in serving in your, in your roles, not only in the planning commission, but on the, uh, city council as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. And you can come around, you wanna do a photo op by the one side?
Weird.
Yeah. It's only temporary.
Thanks for the invite.
All right, uh, next speaker card I have is for General Manager of Pleasant Hill Wreckin Park District, Michelle Lacy.
Thank you very much, Mayor Rin, member of the council. Um, I just wanted to, uh, take an opportunity, uh, to thank Councilmember Vincent, uh, for his support of Pleasant Hill Recreation and Park District. Um, as you came, uh, came on, uh, to the council, we appreciated the partnership. Um, you know, maybe you were voluntold to help at all events that you helped at. Um, I, I would, I say that in jest because, um, you know, I, you were, you were very active, you know, before your wife was on the board at Pleasant Hill Wreckin Park District, and we, you know, have taken beautiful photos for us over the years. And, uh, we appreciate your support, um, and are looking forward to the next chapter and the things that you're going to do um, in our community because we know that, uh, this isn't the end of your community service. And so, um, hopefully, uh, I have a role for you in the future, so. Thank you very much, Alan.
No, 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 I do, no, we do.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We call dibs. All right, that. All right, next speaker card, uh, we have the President of Contra Costa County Board of Education, Mike Maxwell, with us here. I know. Sighing.
Your time is, your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
I, I, the last time I was here speaking to the council, I believe it was when I admonished Rich Botterini for crashing his car into the center divider of the new downtown that he designed. Um, I, I am here to say thank you to Alan Vincent. I've known Alan for quite a long time. I, uh, am a Rotarian and proud of that. I've been in the Pleasant Hill community for 30 years. Um, when he told me that he, uh, was interested in taking on this, uh, uh, activity, I thought to myself, good for you. And was excited. Uh, I cannot offer a plaque like Supervisor Carlson can. I don't know what I can do short of if you need any of your grades changed from middle school and earlier, I can do that. Uh, but Alan, uh, it's been a pleasure watching you serve. Uh, you've done Pleasant Hill a great deal of service. Uh, I'm proud to call you my friend and fellow Rotarian, so congratulations, nice job.
Thank you.
And then last but certainly not least, um, we have Wreckin Park Board Chair and clearly your better half, Sandy Vincent.
I am here not as the board chair of Wreckin Park. Uh, Mayor Rin, and esteemed council members, all of you. It's been about two years since the appointment process began to fill the vacancy on the council as a result of then-council member Ken Carlson winning the supervisory race for our district. I want to congratulate Councilmember Vincent on filling that position in an awesome professional manner and upholding the values and work ethic expected of council members. Our calendar will be a bit less complicated, at least for a while. My congratulations to all of you outgoing, remaining, and incoming council members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other speaker cards for this item?
There are no more speaker cards.
I'll turn it over to my colleagues. I'll start on the far end, Councilmember Schuss.
Thank you, Mayor Rin. Uh, let's see, his wife said you did your job in an awesome and professional way, so.
I wrote it.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm done.
Yeah.
Um, no, I, I, I appreciate you coming. I mean, you, obviously, we haven't served together for years and years and years, but in those, in those two years, I appreciated, uh, the wisdom that you brought. Uh, we, at the time, needed, uh, we had a, a housing element in front of us. Uh, we, uh, we had a general plan in front of us. We, and, and you just stepped right in and you brought that wisdom that you had from your previous roles. And it sure, I think it really, it really helped us, um, at least helped me, um, and in that, during that process. So thank you. Um, and it's, I think, like all three of our outgoing, uh, board or council members tonight, uh, they're, they're, they're leaving the dais, but they're not leaving Pleasant Hill, at least I hope not. Um, but, and so I know we'll see you around, um, in your unofficial role as the, as the sixth chair, uh, sixth board member of Wreckin Park. Anyway, but thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Alan, thank you for stepping forward two years ago and volunteering to, uh, be appointed. I think the council made the right decision at the time, and the service you've given us since has proven us to be correct. I personally have enjoyed our many, many, many hours of interviews over the last two years. Uh, and we're both, I'm sure, very appreciative of the, the residents of the City of Pleasant Hill that wanna get involved and have applied for commission and committee appointments. And Alan and I have been lucky to serve together on the Interview and Nominating Committee. And, uh, our lasting legacy are the appointees that we recommended to the city council. So Alan, thank you and best, best wishes.
Thank you.
Great. Vice Mayor Noack.
Uh, so I will ditto those comments and, uh, I was, I spent many, many, many hours with Alan on the general plan advisory committee and housing element process. And so when he applied to, uh, take Ken Carlson's place, I was thrilled because I knew he could step in right away and help council get us to the finish line on both of those big projects, and I really appreciate that. You always handle yourself very calmly, professionally. Um, having two attorneys up here can be difficult at times, but you guys really, I know. You, but you guys really bring a lot to the table and I, I really appreciate that. And, um, I know I'll see Alan around. We, uh, see each other up at Sea Ranch quite a bit and, um, and I've already got an idea, Michelle, ahead of you as to what Alan's doing next, just, just letting you know. I've got other thoughts for him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right, Alan, I, uh, first met you probably Fourth of July Commission and Senator, and then I was Rotary, Rotarian as well. Um, so done many community service projects with you. Um, I think what's really evident about you is you're just true heart and compassion for people and doing the right thing, and it's been evident up here at the council as well. Um, when we have to decide on stuff, it's very well thought out, articulated, um, and I appreciate your insight into all that and echo everyone else's sentiments. Uh, when Su- Supervisor Carlson left, it was a critical time for us and your skill set, and we were able to hit the ground running and able to complete that. Um, and so I just wanted to thank you. It's been an honor to serve with you and I appreciate your guidance here on the council, so thank you so much. I appreciate it. Um, at this time, I'd like to bring up our Public Works Director, Ann James. We have a surprise for you. And if you could, uh, why don't you come on down to the podium down front? So.
That's a, that's a lot to follow.
I know.
So Councilmember Vincent, we have a tradition here in the City of Pleasant Hill of honoring our outgoing retirees with a sign that was thoughtfully crafted by staff, and so we would like to present you with your street sign. So flick through. Which, which side?
I can put this anywhere I want.
Uh, just not on the pole at the end of it.
Why, he's a. You'll see Alan climbing the pole on crunch across the boulevard later on. Oh, that one.
Matt's really getting his steps in tonight.
Oh. Does that have to go back? Invite Councilmember Vincent for his comments at this time.
Thank you. So two years ago, when Ken Carlson was elected to the Board of Supervisors, I knew there was an opening, but I wasn't quite sure I wanted to apply for it. And I looked at what was coming up in the city because I, at that point, had been watching all the meetings. I was pretty familiar. We had collective bargaining coming up, general plan, hiring a new city manager, uh, and the list goes on. And I knew from my experience, I, I could do all those things. So my thought was, I'm going to apply, I'm qualified, but there may be other reasons other candidates are selected. So I went through the process, uh, to thank the council for voting four to nothing to appoint me, so I appreciate your support on that. I've enjoyed my time. Uh, staff has been great. I work through the city manager normally, but if anytime I have a question, uh, he puts me in touch with the appropriate person very quickly and they give me, uh, thorough answers, so I appreciated that. Now, part of the process was, am I qualified? And secondly, do I have time? Because as Sandy mentioned, she was serving on the Wreckin Park Board, and as we looked, our meetings were different weeks. Uh, but Sandy's pretty good organizing things, so we worked it out. Uh, the only thing we had to do initially was cancel one trip, but that was early on. The only thing we had to do initially was cancel one trip, but that was early on. And other than that, we've worked around our schedules. So I thank Sandy for her support because she was very supportive as I was trying to make up my mind whether or not to do this. One of the things I enjoyed, which I didn't really, really know much about going into this, was the Interview and Nomination Committee with Tim. Because as time went by, more and more people were coming in, and their opening comment was, I love Pleasant Hill. A lot of them had only been here for a year or so. A lot of them were born in other countries and came over here and educated themselves and really wanted to get involved in the community. I don't know if Juanita is there, but Juanita Davalos had us very well organized. Where's Juanita?
Right in the back.
Right in the back.
With the black hat on.
All right. So Juanita had us very well organized. We had binders. Everything was in order. She had talked to the people ahead of time. The first thing every candidate said when they came in is, oh, Juanita, I'm so happy to meet you. You've been so nice to work with. So I appreciate all that. The one thing I enjoyed over the last 22 months working with this group is we could disagree, but we were never disrespectful toward each other. And I really appreciated that. And thank you for that approach. Other than that, thank you very much. I probably didn't thank everybody I would like to, but I really enjoyed my time, and thank you.
Alrighty, moving on to item 10.5, recognition of Tim Flaherty. We have fun a little bit up here. And I have a proclamation here. Read it. Just give me the plan. Okay. All right. Whereas Tim Flaherty was elected to the City Council in 2012 and served a total of 12 years in office. As Councilmember, Tim was elected as mayor in 2017 and 2022, and vice mayor in 2016 and 2021. Considered and voted to approve resolutions, ordinances, and policies that enhance the quality of life for residents of Pleasant Hill, including adoption of the 2040 general plan and associated housing element. Participated in public hearing process of transitioning Pleasant Hill from at-large to district-based elections, rotating in the establishment, I'm sorry, resulting in the establishment of five districts with a greater possibility of minority representation in the city of Pleasant Hill. Tim represented council on many boards and committees, including the Budget Committee, where he served as chair during his term of 2014 through 2024, the Interview and Nominating Committee, the Association of Bay Area Governments, also known as A-BAG, Central Contra Costa Transit Authority, the East Bay Division of League of Cities, the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference, and as liaison to the Wreckin Park District and Chamber of Commerce. Whereas mayor, Tim encouraged youth to learn about local government by co-chairing council meetings with mayor-for-a-day participants, provided welcoming remarks at community forums and ceremonies, including lighting the holiday tree with Santa Light at the night. Tim served as Planning Commissioner from 2010 to 2012, impacting the look and feel of Pleasant Hill, providing input on zoning ordinances and amendments, signage programs, residential and commercial development projects. Whereas while serving on the Planning Commission, Tim, Tim continued to serve on the Civic Action Commission, where he served from 2001 to 2012, serving as chair from 2002 to 2012 with fellow commissioners, planned the annual summer concerts, and in 2004, the inaugural Community Service Day, which is now an annual event in Pleasant Hill. Whereas Tim has a long history of volunteerism and served at many events, including Art Wine and Music Festival, Blues and Brews Festival, 4th of July Parade. Tim received the Pleasant Hill Mayor's Community Service Award in 2010 and Citizen of the Year Community Service Award in 2011. Now, therefore, I, Matt Rin, Mayor of the City of Pleasant Hill, do hereby commend Tim Flaherty for his dedication to the Pleasant Hill community, for his leadership on the City Council. Hereby offer the City Council's thanks and sincere appreciation for all your years of service. Thank you very much. Can I have the speaker cards, please? I stand corrected. We had a typo. Councilmember Flaherty has been mayor three times for the city of Pleasant Hill, not two. Make sure we get that right. All right, let's bring up, let's see, Pleasant Hill Wreckin Park District General Manager, Michelle Lacy. I hope this is going to be like the Tom Brady roast.
We're just gonna, we're gonna mix up the order because most of us are gonna probably come up for every single one. Thank you, Mayor Rin. It is my pleasure, and Councilmember Flaherty, to, to thank you for your dedication and service to the city, the citizens of Pleasant Hill and Pleasant Hill Wreckin Park District. And I distinctly remember the first time I met you as the General Manager eight years ago. You, you welcomed me to the city and said, I love Wreckin Park. When I get, when I get compliments about the parks, I say, thank you. And if there are any complaints, I send them your way. So, and that pretty much, and I said, well, thank you very much. You please take pride in the parks and definitely, you know, you can, you can definitely take any credit you would like. We'd love to share it with you. And, and so I want to, on behalf of the Pleasant Hill Wreckin Park District Board of Directors and staff, I want to thank you for your dedication to the Wreckin Park District. You opened your home as a host for a party for wine, women, and shoes. You have, you know, diligently served beer at Blues and Brews on an ongoing basis every year. We can count on you. And, and I, for one, the Pleasant Hill Chamber of Commerce, state of the city, is never, never going to be the same without you as mayor. So yes, definitely all three times. That was, that was enjoyable, although I only got to see two of your performances. But, but I, I do appreciate your 12 years of service is a very long time to serve in a, in a volunteer capacity. And we appreciate your service and know that you'll still be on Macefield, and I know where to find you, so. Because I did attend that party at your house, so. Thank you, Councilmember.
Great. Thank you so much. I'd like to bring up Contra Costa County Board of Education President, Mike Maxwell.
It is going to be a revolving door, and we're going to be in different order, but.
I just shuffle the cards.
It's important to do that. Exactly. President Rin and council members, thank you very much. Tim, these halls have seen some great leadership. Kim Brandt, Terry Williamson, Paul Cooper. I'm waiting for some of you older people to start laughing.
I mean, you lost everybody.
See, there you go. And that's why I mentioned that. But, you know, I was elected in 2014, and so we've paralleled careers here in Pleasant Hill. And I'll tell you, I've modeled a great deal of my work after the work that you've done and the way that you've carried yourself. You've been a great presence. You've been a lot of fun to hang around with at events and fundraisers and the things that we were able to participate in. And I will tell you, I send my sincere apologies from my wife, Sherry, who is indeed your favorite and biggest fan. In fact, I think she likes you more than she likes me. But you have done great things for this city, and we are all very proud of that. And we are all very happy that you chose to serve and did the work that you did. So thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you, Mike. And Supervisor Carlson, come on up. And then I'll probably. Well, we'll bring it down because I gotta give him the proclamation and then.
Good evening. This isn't the first time you've had to have a walking assistance apparatus, is it? But I, I feel you because I think during the time we served together, I might have broken a leg. You might have done a few things. Tim. I'm pointing fingers. It was, it was a city council meeting under that austere leadership you mentioned earlier. And I think it was after getting off a late shift at 2:00 AM, and the Pleasant Hill City Council meeting was still going, and that prompted me to jump in. Little did I know that I would have competitions such as you and Mayor Rin, but it, it afforded me the opportunity to get to know you better. And again, I, I value your friendship, but first and foremost, your sense of humor. And I would read this from our board. If somewhere I could have worked boulder dash into that. But there really was none in the time we served together and the work you've done on, on the, on the council. It's just been amazing. I, you know, think back quite often to the overwhelming first few weeks of being on city council. Martin showing up at our house with bundles of binders and documents and the general plan and the crossroads specific plan and all this. And we had to absorb it within 72 hours to come in and decide what we're going to do with the dome and the crossroads shopping center. And then there were other, you know, tenuous items that we might have taken up from a gun ordinance to a few other things. So we never, but the reality is we never shied away, and, and a big part of that was the leadership you showed from the dais. And it was really, really important. So you look back and you think about those things, what's going on at the crossroads, the new library, and all the other things that have gone on has been truly amazing in those 12 years that you've served. And I just, I just can't thank you enough for your support of me personally in learning this job because you were a big part of that and understanding the work we're doing. And I'm just really exceptionally grateful to have been able to serve with you and to enjoy those opportunities away from the dais where we might be pouring beer at the Blues and Brew. So thank you again for 12 years.
Thank you, Ken.
I'll come to you.
I'll bring him down. And just stay down there, Tim. And then. Oh. I'll get it. Oh, you give it. I'll give it mine. You're trying to save me from walking around, like, poor guy.
Don't drop him. Stay there, some. Eric, here, give me, Tim, give me that one and then.
I, I do want to thank you, Supervisor Carlson, for teeing us up. You couldn't fit it on the proclamation, but we got it on the sign. I was told this couldn't be a roast, but staff also had a little fun with the sign. For those of you that don't know, Councilmember Flaherty, if it involved money, it was never on consent. Not ever.
Yes, you can come back. Have a seat. Now we commence with the roasting. No, I just. I'll let you get settled. I don't want you to miss a minute. I'm sure you'll watch it over and over again on your computer at home. I'll open it up to my colleagues. I'd like to make comments. I'll start with Councilmember Vincent.
Vincent. Well, everybody's mentioned Ken or Tim's great sense of humor. It does, sometimes our meetings can get a little bit tense, and Tim can kind of lighten the mood, so I've appreciated that. One thing I've learned is Tim and Sue on the Budget Committee are very thorough. So if something comes to us and it's been approved by budget, I'm more inclined to vote for it. I know it's been thoroughly vetted by the two of them. And Tim always explored options. Sometimes I would think an item would be fairly straightforward, and Tim would always raise some other options none of us had thought about. So I appreciated that you did that. Sometimes it made the meeting a little bit longer, but they were good options. And Tim had to guide us through a couple of kind of challenging meetings when there were some things going on not only here, but at other city councils. So I did a great job dealing with that. And one thing I'd always wanted to do on the 4th of July was to ride on the wine trolley. And Tim usually got that every year, so I finally got to ride the wine trolley. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Vice Mayor Knack.
Yeah, as I've been on council for 10 years with Tim, and it has been, yeah, an amazing experience. He and I have been on budget together almost the entire time, right? Nine, nine, nine out of the 10 years, I think, we've been on budget together. Yeah, you had it one. I don't know why you did that, but you did. You screwed it up one year.
It was a leap year.
Yeah. And in that consent, no way is absolutely true. That's probably the one thing we disagreed on most. I would say, yeah, put it on consent. Nope, not, not, not Tim. Any amount, small amount of money, we had to put it and discuss it. So. But, you know, it was great because we were both very thorough about it. And, yeah, poor Eric probably had to deal with longer budget meetings than he wanted to because we were both so thorough. But it was really, it was, it was a good partnership on Budget Committee, and I, I really appreciate that. As Alan mentioned, we did have to go through some difficult meetings at times when Tim was the mayor. And he handled it. I was just, I was thinking through many of them. Thank God Tim's sitting there and handling these difficult meetings because I don't think anybody could have handled them as well as he did. And so I really appreciated that. I also really appreciated his thoroughness on all the legal stuff. I'm sure Janet may disagree with that, but, but because that did make our meetings go a little bit longer when they were debating legal terms in, in documents. But we also could really appreciate his thoroughness in that aspect as well. And so, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss you a lot, but I will, sure, I'll see you. You know, the slide's always available in the backyard. And also an inside joke. But I, and I'm sure we'll see each other, but just thank you so much for your partnership over the 10 years.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Chess.
Oh, boy. Okay. So I had to scroll down some thoughts here. You know, when Tim ran for city council, I believe in 2012, I, as his friend and neighbor, sat kind of on his, on his kitchen cabinet. And I feel like I'm somewhat responsible for his victory. And then 10 years later, when I got elected to the city council and we went to district elections, I feel somewhat responsible for you leaving. Ah, but enough about me. Yeah. Every, everything in the middle is about a couple of different things that strike me. One is just, and forget, just the bad adjective, but the man is just freaking smart. He's such a smart guy. And, and he's such, not only is he a smart guy, smarter than me, which is hard for me to admit, but he's curious, you know? And, and I think Alan alluded to that earlier, where he talked about having options and looking into things like that. And I know this not just from our two years together, but just as friends and hearing about meetings and things like that in his prior 10 years. But Tim is not only just a brilliant mind, legal mind, and just a regular mind, but he's, 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 he's curious. And I think as, as anybody who is, whoever wants to aspire to being a public servant, you, you don't have to be smart, but hopefully you learn a lot. But you have to, you have to be curious, and you have to look around and say, what is the best solution for our city? And Tim did that, even though Tim probably had the answer. He probably had the answer before a lot of us had the answer. But anyway, so I just, I always feel, I always, I've just, I've always been in awe of kind of, of, of that. And, and also too, as, as a leader, you know, you've heard in sports about, you know, game managers and things like. But Tim, Tim was truly a leader. And, and some of you, I'm sure a lot of you in this room remember when we lost Martin. And, you know, I remember to Sue, Sue's point about earlier about, you know, I'm so glad that we had Tim as our mayor when, when Martin was taken from us. And he was the one that was out there, you know, talking to the media and, and dealing all that with, despite a huge personal loss. This was, this was one of his best friends. And so I was, I was, I had admired that. I wasn't on the council at that point. But then, as I got on the council with him in the last two years, to, to Vice Mayor Noak's point, I also admired, we had some pretty contentious meetings, meetings that were this full, but not with, with, not with smiling faces. And, 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 or people spewing hate over the, over the, this coward's, you know, over the loudspeaker. And Tim handled that like a real leader. And we're gonna, we're gonna miss that. We're always gonna have new, fresh leadership coming on board, and that's gonna be great. But I just want to take a minute to acknowledge the fact that we're, we're, we're gonna be losing a, a really great public servant who not only was a council member, but a planning commissioner and a civic action commissioner. So anyway, thank you.
And, oh. And if you don't like any of my comments, then you can tell me that when I drive you home tonight. And oh, and if you don't like any of my comments, then you can tell me that when I drive you home tonight.
Uh, all right, Tim. Um, I, I think a lot of my colleagues alluded to a lot of the things that we recognize about you with your leadership. Um, I've considered you a mentor here. It, it's, it's hard to measure how valuable you've been here on the council, but it, when we go through the process and we're having some contentious stuff and we have to kind of wordsmith it and work it out and figure out a legal perspective from it. Um, you know, your insight into that um helps get us through and really building a consensus, um, which I think a lot of times you don't see on governing bodies. Um, and so by having that intelligence and wherewithal uh to do it, um, I've gotten to know you, know you really well um over the last eight years on the council and knew you before from your public service. But you'll definitely be missed. Um, it was like, you know, you have a lot of fun and you like to get the limelight, but the other token too, you like to kind of hide behind the scenes and you know, you're the highlight of any event that we go to. It's a lot of fun to uh go to a lot of these things with you and hopefully you still stay active because you are a community servant. Uh, you do have other people's best interests at the heart and truly the heart of Pleasant Hill is with you as well. So uh, I thank you for all your service, Tim, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
I'm always afraid to turn over the microphone to Tim because you never know what's gonna happen, but this is your opportunity.
Well, good evening. Um, just a few off the cuff remarks before I get to my prepared remarks. Baldur Dash. Early in my 10, first term tenure, there was a council member who sat next to me that for the life of me, I couldn't understand why this person wanted to be a council member. This person complained about everything, found fault in everything. Very nice person uh on, on a one-on-one basis, but when it came to council matters, always critical of staff. And at one particular meeting, this person was going off on this tangential road about everything being wrong and, and, and complain, complain, complain. And it was just welling up inside me. This like, this is utter total. Baldur Dash. Baldur Dash, thinking of another two syllable word. Uh, so that's where the Baldur Dash comes from. Memorialized by my Christmas present that year from Ken Carlson, the Baldur Dash Game. And it became sort of the word, sort of the Groucho Marx word, again showing my age. Tim, find a way to say Baldur Dash at a meeting again, you know? My mobility issues tonight are because I had a total hip replacement three weeks ago today. Uh, and it takes a village. I use Jim Benotto's walker. I use Lisa Thompson's toilet riser. I have Mike Maxwell's walking sticks. So thank you, Pleasant Hill. And that's why I say Pleasant Hill is a great place to live, to raise a family and to conduct business. It is a fact that the people that live in Pleasant Hill are nicer than all the people living in the surrounding communities. Any realtor. It takes a lot of hard work to make this city so, and I am just pleased and thrilled that I've played a very small part in that hard work over the last nearly 25 years. After my service on the Civic Action Commission, chairing the city's 50th anniversary celebration and serving on the Planning Commission, I was honored to be elected to serve as your council member and to have that position these past 12 years. I was honored, my colleagues selected me to serve three terms as mayor.
I'm sorry, man. I'm sorry. I know.
That should have been passed by me for editing before it was printed.
Sorry.
Uh, I do want to thank all my fellow council members, both present and past, with whom I had the privilege to serve alongside. Now Pleasant Hill's been lucky to have the finest council members dedicated to the greater good and they are a collegial bunch. I send my good wishes and some unsolicited advice to those new council members to be sworn in tonight. I tell you to keep an open mind, don't prejudge, read the packet twice. Listen to your colleagues and public comment. Respect the city staff. They work very hard and are invaluable resources for you. Maintain your sense of humor and humility. I want to thank my family and my friends that have supported my public service. My son, Tim Junior, and his fiancee, Tadiana Woodfield Taylor are here. I'd love the two of you to stand up and take a bow. You know, Tim is the one, the last person that convinced me to run for City Council. I had been approached by a lot of friends and colleagues because I'd been involved in the city, but I was just hemming and hawing. Uh, and I was having lunch with him one day and we were talking about it and he asked me what, what was holding me back? And, and I said, fear of failure. I, I, I didn't think I could handle loss. Uh, and he reminded me about how I enjoyed public service, how this was something I wanted to do for a long time and that I should just go for it. And I did. So thank you, Tim. My candidacy back in 2012 was propelled by the hard work of many and I would not be here but for the Chess family, the Catrivos, the Oldenbergs, the De La Ohs, the Donahues, Bill Bankert, Steve Wallace, Allison Kerber, and my dear friend, Martin Neelis, and so, so many others. But tonight is bittersweet. I leave the council knowing that the city is safe, it's fiscally sound, it is well planned and maintained. We have a high quality of life here amid our self-proclaimed small town atmosphere. And we have the best city staff delivering the highest quality of public service to our residents. So I want to thank you Pleasant Hill for the honor of my life so far. Thank you. Thank you.
I knew I should have gone before, Tim.
Yep.
Uh, with that, actually, we're gonna go to item 10.7 and I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Noack.
So it's my honor to uh speak about Matt because he couldn't really do it himself. So that's my job. So I will start with your uh resolution here. Whereas Matt Rin was elected to the Pleasant Hill City Council in 2016 and served a total of eight years in office. As council member, Matt was elected as mayor in 2019 and 2023. Wait, that's wrong.
2020 and 2021.
Another time?
2020, you were, no, because Matt and I were um mayors during COVID. We were the mayor, mayors during COVID. So.
That's all right.
I was about to say that date's off. We'll have to get that fixed. And Vice Mayor, that is 2019 and 2022. Um, considered and voted to approve resolutions, ordinances and policies that enhance the quality of life for the residents of Pleasant Hill, including adoption of the 2040 general plan and associated housing element. Participated in the public hearing process transitioning Pleasant Hill from at-large elections to district-based elections, resulting in the establishment of five districts that will allow the greatest possibility of minority representation on the city council. Matt represented the council on many boards and committees, including the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference, John Muir Community Health Fund, Transpac, Marin Clean Energy Board, and his liaison to Pleasant Hill Recreation and Park District, the School District Task Force, and Pleasant Hill Chamber of Commerce. And Matt served as Chair on the City's Economic Development Committee from 2023 to 2024, providing input on business initiatives, including the perks gift card and the website and social media technical assistant grant. And whereas as mayor, Matt provided welcoming comments at community forums and ceremonies and helped youth learn about local government by holding mock city council meetings with school classes and co-chairing city council meetings with mayor for a day participants. Whereas Matt served on the City's Education Commission from 2013 through 2016, where he served as Liaison de Valhalla and Strandwood Elementary Schools, participated in career day events and supported the mission of providing a connection between the city and local schools. Whereas Matt is volunteer with local service organizations, including Pleasant Hill Rotary, the YMCA Advisory Board, Chamber of Commerce and Youth Soccer Association. Whereas Matt received the Pleasant Hill Businessperson of the Year Community Service Award in 2011 and Citizen of the Year Community Service Award in 2015. Now therefore I sue Noack, Vice Mayor of the City of Pleasant Hill, do commend Matt Rin for his dedication to the Pleasant Hill community, his leadership on the city council and as mayor, and hereby offer the city council's thanks and appreciation for his years of service. So before inviting remarks from council, I'd like to take time for public comment. Okay, who didn't go first already between the three of you?
Whoop.
Mike.
Oh, I got four. Totally messed up. All right. We're gonna go with Mike. You didn't go first last time, so it's your, you're up first this time.
This will be an easy one. Um, I, I first would like to say that I oppose this clock here because I've been sitting in that chair where I could see it and the only time it runs is when I'm up here speaking. And that's a bunch of Baldur Dash. Um, I was standing in Diablo trophies, Dave Mascaro's here the other day and two citizens who were not very nice uh came in and looked at me while I was waiting for my plaque to get uh finished. And they said to me, Mayor Rin, we've got a bunch of problems and we need you to fix them. I don't, I'm not the mayor. I may look like him, but I'm not the mayor. Just a little older and a little better looking. Um, I will say, Matt, uh, it's been a pleasure to work with you. You are great for Pleasant Hill. There is no one in the world that loves being mayor more than you do. Um, you are great for this city. Great with kids, your youth service work through Rotary and Interact and everything at College Park has been great. And so on behalf of the 187,000 public school students in Contra Costa County, we would like to say thank you for your service. You have a great family, three beautiful women there standing behind you, two of which I knew when they were this tall. Proud of you. You did a great job and you are great for this city. So congratulations on your service. And I would like to know, I would like to know when I'm gonna get a BART station in Danville, please.
Working on it.
That requires the two of us.
Thank you.
Uh, next, Janessa. Is she? There she is.
Hello, council. Hello, mayor. Uh, my name is Janessa Oriole. I'm the Deputy District Director for Congressman Mark DeSagne and I am happy to be here because he couldn't be. Um, I wanted to present this certificate of special congressional recognition uh to Matt Rin in recognition of outstanding and invaluable service to the city of Pleasant Hill and dated here. So thank you again for the service and um just wanted to present.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Ken.
Oh, sure, sure.
Oh, yeah.
You can bring him up. Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I didn't, I, guys, I now see that on your card. Sorry.
Apologies. Um, so I wanted to also um thank Alan Vincent for your time on council. Thank you for your service to Pleasant Hill and to the residents of California District 10, the congressman. And also Tim Flaherty, I also have a certificate for you and admittedly, they all say the same thing. But, but again, uh, we appreciate your service, of course. And so thank you very much. Love to.
Thank you. Get your photo. Tim, you wanna do your photo? You wanna have her come over?
Yeah, you need another Pleasant Hill bag. Uh, Ken Carlson? County Supervisor Ken Carlson, sorry.
Somewhere, I think Baldur Dash is in this one. I'm sure. No, Matt, um, first I'll say thank you from the beginning. We ran against each other. We were in that school of 2012 and you still stuck with it. I mean, it's just your dedication to this community, to the citizens of Pleasant Hill, um, is truly amazing and heartwarming. Uh, when I first met you, you were helping to bring the, the Pleasant Hill Chamber back to life. And that's what initially really impressed me is the challenges they were facing and the leadership you showed and the hard work you put in to stabilize the Pleasant Hill Chamber. Um, was just kind of that, that lead in to everything I saw over the last 12 plus years now. Um, is just exceptional. And then you got shortchanged. Um, and I will share a little, little part of this. Um, you know, you were always my vice mayor, right? And then somehow I knew the pandemic was coming and I had to get out. So we're gonna give you the mayor's seat for the pandemic and, or at least the start off. But again, um, you know, being mayor in 2020 um was just, just a crazy, crazy time. Um, I'm trying to find where I was gonna read for you because whereas during his tenure, Mr. Rin exhibited unwavering dedication to the community, working collaboratively with fellow council members, city staff and local stakeholders to address the needs of the city and ensure a prosperous future for all who call Pleasant Hill home. And his leadership abilities were especially evident when he served as mayor of Pleasant Hill in 2020 and again in 2024, when he demonstrated remarkable resilience, resourcefulness and empathy in navigating the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic. Because it's really hard to be somebody who wants to be out there in the public, engage in your community, and we all have to do it over Zoom. And so uh, again, it's just your hard work, your dedication to this community, um, the successes that you've chalked up. And unfortunate for you, you have not gotten rid of me yet either. With your new role, um, we'll be serving on uh the JPA for the Contra Costa Center and the Pleasant Hill BART Station. And I'm sure there's gonna be other opportunities in the future for us to continue our service together. Because you do, you make the work. Um, again, you bring that sense of humor to it, but also that sense of commitment that, that makes the work, it can make the work fun. So I appreciate all your service and I appreciate working with you in the past and looking forward to working together in the future.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it.
I'll just photobomb it from behind. Okay, Michelle, your turn.
I get to back clean up.
Yep. Uh, so.
I uh, on behalf of uh Pleasant Hill Wreck and Park District and the Board Directors, I want to formally uh thank Mayor Rin uh for your dedication uh to the city, um, to the residents uh of the Pleasant Hill Wreck and Park District, not only as an elected official, but as a small business owner, um, who frequently uh, you know, spends your own dollars to support our uh, our events um and as not only um as a volunteer, um, but also as a sponsor. And I distinctly remember the great snarl or the great traffic jam of 2020 um when we did the Holiday Festival as a drive-through event. And I'm pretty sure that there was a car, Matt Rin or a uh, a State Farm uh car wash uh that Mayor Rin sponsored um that, you know, was responsible or the senior citizens who wanted to say hi to everybody because we've all been cooped up. But either way, pretty sure we backed up traffic all the way to, all the way to 680, sort of PD. Um, but uh, I think that was the, the time when we decided no more drive-through events. But anyway, so um, you know, you have uh served admirably admirably um and with dedication and passion. And that has uh been show, you know, that you show that freely, um, including on, you know, last Wednesday uh when small children were coming up and just had, you know, were just twinkles in their eyes for, you know, you hosting them as council members for the day. And that was uh, that was really special to see. And I personally want to thank you for uh, for your um sponsorship of me in Rotary or maybe. And I personally want to thank you for, for your sponsorship of me in Rotary, or maybe I just wanna, you know, say. Anyways, thanks for, for keeping that light and I enjoy seeing you. And I also am looking forward to continuing to, to, to work with you because, you know, our, our district extends into Center Contra Costa, so we, we have, we have district boundaries that, that, that involve or that go all the way around the BART station. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Lio, do we have any more? Okay, thank you. I'll now close public comment and bring it back to the council for remarks. I'm, I've got Anne listed down. I got this. Don't worry.
You gotta come on to the street side.
I want my sign.
I'm just kidding, Sue.
She's.
I'm gonna miss you.
We'll still see each other. Anyway, so let's go with comments from the council first. Alan?
Yes, a lot of my notes are, things I were gonna say have been mentioned by other people. But two things, a couple of things that weren't mentioned. I didn't hear anything about kudos because I can't think of a meeting where Matt didn't extend kudos to somebody. And I, I think staff and everyone appreciates that. It was mentioned that he's been involved in youth sports, but he was actually a coach and a ref. So he was out there on the field, working with the kids. I know that Matt has loved being mayor. It's obvious that he really enjoyed it. I first got to know Matt mainly through selfies. And Matt's known for selfies, but also at the same time, he was promoting what was going on in the city, whether it was an activity or a club or whatever. But Matt did a good job of that. I just really enjoyed him the way he ran meetings. I just, you can tell he loves the city and he loves what he's doing. So I appreciate that and thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Tim?
Well, I'm not sure when I first met you, Matt, but I think I know when I first saw you everywhere. Your picture was in every penny ad newspaper. It was, I think, on the bus stop benches. It was on those separators at Safeway or on the back of my, my shopping cart. It was, it was in every community magazine and every community advertisement. And I first thought, wow, this guy must be really, really wealthy. A great self-promoter. But really what it showed is your tremendous commitment to the community. Each one of those ads was in support of something going on in the community, whether it was the publication itself or promoting or sponsoring an event. And, and it's that just sort of heartfelt love for this community that you adopted that endeared you to me. That and your cute dimples. So.
It's getting awkward, Ashley.
So I really appreciate, you know, when I said maintaining a sense of humor and humility, you epitomize that for me as a fellow council member. I wish you the best as you take on this incredible challenge at the BART board. I'll be looking for you on the BART train, right? And I really will be looking for you on the BART train.
I'll be hiding from you, but yeah, I'll be there.
And looking forward to maybe riding on a BART car in the next Fourth of July parade.
We'll see. Thank you so much, Tim. Appreciate it.
Zach?
Flaherty stole my dimple line. Matthew, Matthew, Matthew. As soon as we're done with this, I'm gonna go back to calling you Matty, Matty Rin. I just slows off the tongue better, but I can't do that while you're mayor. I think it might be easier to find a job that you haven't done than all the jobs that you have done. You are indeed a huge public servant. And I mean, I, I mean, not your stature. I mean.
I'm working on it.
No, I mean, your, your job, what you do in the city, your, your dedication to this city. Yeah. And in addition, forget politics for a minute, and, and you mentioned, you made a, Tim brought a great point. I mean, you do sponsor pretty much everything, it seems like. And that shows a dedication to, to our city. I don't know if I know anybody who's as dedicated to Pleasant Hill as, as Matt Rin. I mean, and he does truly love to be the mayor. And, and so I'm, I've really enjoyed our time together on this, although it's only been a couple of years. I think without the pesky Brown Act, you know, restrictions, I might be able to walk by now with Millie and stop in, ask for advice, you know, that kind of thing. You know, I'd be hesitant before, but now you might be, you never know. You never know who's gonna show up.
There you go.
There you go. Anyway, so Matt, I just, congratulations and, and thank you for all your service. Best of luck with BART. I hope you get one of those big, like Supervisor Carlson over, like one of those big buttons or something. Yeah.
It's a slipper card, but yeah.
Yeah. Because when you're, when you're getting hammered by, by something, immediately say, hey, at least I got the, I got the button, right? Anyway, so congratulations and more importantly, thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you. All right, Sue.
My turn.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I actually don't remember when exactly we met, but it was a while, it was a while ago. It was, it was, it was quite a while ago. And beside our time on city council, which has been eight years, we spent a lot of time at Rotary together. And we were buddies on Interact. Matt and I ran Interact program at College Park for probably eight years at least. And so it was really, we really got to know each other well because we would go to Interact, which is a high school junior Rotary. And so we would go there and then we'd go out to lunch. So we got to really know each other well over the last eight years. And it's, it's, it's really been an honor. You know, I'm, I'm gonna miss it. Well, I'm not really gonna miss him because I sit on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which sort of controls some of BART's funding. So he's gotta be really nice to me.
Love you. Love you. Thank you. I only need 300 million, so good job. It's not a problem. You gotta.
We will be spending plenty of time together still on MTC and at Rotary. And so luckily, I don't have to say I'm gonna miss you because we will still see each other a lot and just appreciate your friendship, your sense of humor on the city council. Just being your friend has been just great. So I'm looking forward to many more years of that. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, now we've gotta go down and really give him his obnoxious gift that he selected.
Cool.
And you can never go anywhere without license.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll sit down without the chair. That would've been really good. Typical behavior.
All right, passing back to you now.
All right. Well, first and foremost, I want to thank Ashley. When you decide to run for public office, it impacts your life deeply. There's a lot of hours we put in, you know, studying for the agendas. You know, we all have kind of thick skin out there, but the things that get said about you. But she's always been my rock at home and just no matter what happened in the city or the day, and, you know, I'd give everything I have to Pleasant Hill, I'd just be out of gas and come home and just to know that home was home and it's just, I could recharge. And so, thank you. Being my co-parent and raising two amazing daughters, Maddie and Emily, thank you. You know, when I first started, you were just little kids and, you know, I remember in 2012, first running and, you know, on your way to elementary school, on kindergarten with Maddie, you know, she loved to go and hand out the flyers and do the things. And just seeing that you can make a difference as a parent for your kids and knowing that you can change the world. Being a girl dad has been probably one of the best things that's ever happened to me. And knowing that, trying to lead by example for you and know that you can change the world and make it a better place by being a good person and caring about people and doing the right thing. And then just creating opportunities for those who don't always have the opportunities. And so being an advocate for women and all those who need to fight for their rights on a daily basis and really trying to change the world by your actions. And just even the little ways like our little town of Pleasant Hill. And just being perseverance. So Ken talked about earlier in 2012, I, I ran and didn't win. Durant was already an existing council member and Tim won and Ken came in. And I won't say I finished like 12th place behind him, but I wasn't close on. But you don't give up. I had a vision. I knew that I still could make a difference. It wasn't my time. And so I got in 2016. I appreciated serving with Ken when you were on the council, your mentorship there, and continued to mentor me as a supervisor. You're a true leader. Like everyone I've served with up here, you spend so many time at community events and, you know, hours and things like that. You, everyone's become a family to me. And it's truly brothers, sisters. It takes a village and I'm grateful for everyone here. City staff, I guess Alan Benson always did, but I always gotta talk up our city staff. We do have the best staff out there. Make us look good. We get a lot of the credit. But the thoroughness of the reports, the knowledge, the financial discipline that we have as a city to make it solid and a good foundation that we're leaving in a good spot. There are challenges ahead, but we've weathered some tough times. I appreciate the trust in making me mayor in 2020 and then giving me a do-over after COVID for 2024. Because I tried not to count that year. It was a really rough year. Learned a lot about myself, just like a lot of people, but trying to be a mayor of a town during a pandemic, they don't teach you that in mayor school of what to do or what not to do. And we're just trying to invent it on the fly and, you know, who would think that your first days, you're trying to find toilet paper for people and things like that. But you do, and you make sure that people are safe and get what they need and resources. It's, it's tough being in this position right now. My heart was broken a couple of years ago when we did have to go to the district. I get it. I understand it. I know it's for the better good of the city. But it doesn't mean it still doesn't hurt because that meant that I could not serve on the council anymore unless I wanted to run against one of my good friends, Zach, for my district. I know I have a reputation of moving all around Pleasant Hill, so I do have firsthand knowledge of many neighborhoods around here. So most people are like, just move again. You moved already a couple of times. Just pick up one of the new districts. But that's not me and that's not who I am. I'm more happy where we are. And, you know, I'm excited about the future. Tonight's a celebratory night and I want to celebrate the new people coming in, but also take the moment to thank many fans and family that are here tonight. Only have three family members, but everyone else, my friends feel like family and my council members up here. It's interesting how kind of at the time and still struggle, one door kind of closes. But now I have another great opportunity as being a representative of the BART director for the area. And some big challenges over there and it's not gonna be done alone. I know Sue and I joke about needing her support, but really we do. But I'm up for it. But I need your help and I really think we can make a difference there. So all in all, thank you, everyone. I appreciate you from the bottom of my heart. And I love Pleasant Hill. You know, hopefully I've inspired others to give back to Pleasant Hill. You know, write the checks so I don't have to anymore. Ashley's like, go, and we've got girls going to college, so. And anyone knows the insurance world right now. Checks are not really covered. So anyways. But truly, truly thank you. I'm gonna miss doing this on a regular basis. And rare occasions, I'm gonna lose words, but other than just thank you and I, I've honored. You guys have kidded me a little bit about being mayor, but it has been an honor and a privilege to be a mayor. And I've tried to have fun with it. I've tried to engage many people as being mayor and just make it so more people want to engage in the civic process. So with that, wish luck to the three new newbies coming in. And I know we gotta come up with a phrase for the new three, but coming in, but wish you well. And I'm still here as a resource. I'll just be here in another capacity. So thank you so much.
Can you keep the box?
Can I keep the box? Just kidding. All right, with that, I'll take control of the meeting one more time for one more agenda item, which many of you are here for tonight. And that is item 10.8. Oh, no, that was me. Still screwing up doors in. 10.9, the oath of office for our newly elected council members. And at this point in time, I'd like to invite District Four Supervisor Ken Carlson to the podium to administer the oath of office to Andre Oblinsky and Amanda Sakat.
She has a different person swear.
What's the best camera angle for him?
She has.
So it really is an honor to wear you both in. So please, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, take your name.
I, Andre Oblinsky.
I, Amanda Sakat.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemy.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I bear faith and allegiance.
That I bear faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
During such time as I hold the office of.
During such time as I hold the office of.
Council member.
Council member.
Congratulations.
You gotta sign your life away now.
That's it? Ew. Congratulations.
And then we'll bring you, we'll bring you guys up in a little bit, okay?
Under.
And then after this photo op. I do one at a time. Yeah. Ladies first, Andre. First. Put that in your baby book. There you go. Yeah. At this point in time, I'd like to invite Commission on Aging Commissioner Quee Tran to the podium to administer the oath of office to Bell Law.
First, I want to thank clerk, attorney, city manager for collaborating, offering me the privilege and honor.
Do you mind speaking into the microphone real quick? Sorry. For those watching at home, for those who are watching at home, I know.
Do you want me to repeat it again?
Uh, if you're giving us congratulations, yeah.
Anytime I give congratulations, fair and worthy.
Why don't you start from the top?
I will start from the top. So I just wanted to thank the city and its current and outgoing council members, as well as the city clerk, the city attorney, city manager for collaborating, offering me the privilege and honor of administering the oath of office for Pleasant Hill council member to the first Asian American woman to take on this role. Repeat after me.
Let me make sure this goes in the mic.
There you go. I state your name.
I, Bell Law.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Bear faith and allegiance.
That I will bear faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties for which I'm upon, what? About to enter. I had to see, break of that, right? At one time.
During such time as I hold the office.
During such time as I hold the office of council member.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Bell, did you get your photo with that quee?
One of them goes to Bell.
Okay, at this time, uh, we will be taking a brief 10-minute recess so we can transition, uh, the old council members and have the new council members seated up here to elect a new mayor and vice mayor, uh, from the new council. Once we do that, they'll each get an opportunity to speak and then we'll have a brief celebration in the room. So just kind of let it transition. We can catch up a brief 10 minutes. And, uh, we'll get back to that and I'll turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Noack at this time. Thank you.
And today, you've proven that vision is possible. To my campaign team and the countless volunteers who dedicated their time and energy. I want to thank you for your unwavering commitment. You knocked on doors, made calls and spread our message with passion and resilience. This win belongs to you as much as it does to me and our community. To my family and friends who stood by me through the long days and the late nights. Thank you for your love and encouragement. Your support kept me grounded and motivated me throughout this entire journey. To everyone who voted whether you supported me or not, I promise to serve you with integrity, respect and dedication. I will be a leader for all, listening to your concerns, valuing your perspective and working tirelessly to deliver on the promises that we've made. This is just the beginning. Winning this election is not the end goal. It is the start of the real work ahead. Together, we will tackle challenges, embrace innovation and build a future we can all be proud of. Once again, thank you from the bottom of my heart and I'm honored to represent you and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get ready to work and together we can bring this vision to life, growing and thriving as a community. Thank you.
First, I want to thank everyone for spending your evening with us. I mean, this has been a long haul. Uh, I know several folks had to leave early. Um, I'll recognize a couple of them as they leave, uh, that did have to leave. But, um, thanks everyone for. I'll recognize a couple of them that did have to leave, but thanks, everyone, for sticking with us. We're almost there. It's a very big celebration we're having. But this is historic. It's a historic election for folks in District 2. We have representation. We've all been on this journey for three, four years, and it's paid off. I wouldn't be here without, first of all, my amazing family. Dasha, my wife, you're my rock. For 20 years, you have uplifted me, and together, we are here. I also want to say thanks to my two oldest kids, Vera and Yuri. They both, for two cycles, walked the precinct, supported me, and have been all-around great kids. The help they give with our youngest, Konstantin, accompanying me to events. They're all in on Pleasant Hill. I love these kids. They're great. I'm also so happy to see so many supporters in the audience. A lot of you have been instrumental, and I'm here to work hard for you. I also want to thank the Slavic community for your support all these years. Together, we are working to support each other during one of the most difficult times in our recent history. I also want to acknowledge the LGBTQIA community. Your presence and my support today shows how being an ally all these years has made a difference. I want to make a special thanks to someone who had to leave, John and Steve Crowvo. They left their 48th anniversary at the Hub 1220 to come here this evening to watch me get sworn in. That was instrumental to me. I'm glad that they were able to make it. Forty-eight years ago today, Contra Costa's first and still only LGBTQIA bar open is a safe space. I only hope it's open for another 48 years plus. Thank you, everyone in Pleasant Hill, for your continued support. I promise to work hard to continue to make Pleasant Hill a wonderful, inclusive community for all of us. Thank you.
Amanda?
Good evening to all the elected officials here and to Pleasant Hill residents. Thank you so much for entrusting me with this office. I promise to work hard to find creative solutions to issues facing Pleasant Hill and represent District 5 residents and their ideas as a Pleasant Hill City Council member. There are many people who supported me throughout this campaign. First, I'd like to acknowledge my husband, Geza, and my two children, Finnegan and Anna, for supporting me through the ups and downs of campaigning. Next, I'd like to thank my campaign consultant, Jeremy Carlson, and my treasurer, Camila Podowski, for all their hard work. Thank you to all the elected officials who endorsed me and gave me advice, especially our county supervisor, Ken Carlson. Thank you also to all the groups that supported me. I'm particularly grateful to my church community at Church of the Resurrection. It takes a village to run a campaign. There are a lot of people who hosted parties for me, including Joe and Mary Anton, Jennifer Talbot, Kath and Christie Groh, and Sandy Bunschai. There are a lot of people that walked blocks with me. We knocked on every door in District 5, including my husband again, Heidi Taylor, Margaret Wooliver, Julie Van Barren, Stacy Matos, and Rick and Ethel Zunt. I'd also like to thank the folks that have worked on previous campaigns and gave me outstanding advice, including Jonna Thompson, Michelle Simone, Amy Scott, Slovec, and Phil Matthews. And I'd also like to thank Lynn and Chuck for putting up all my signs, in addition to putting up Measure S signs. And I'd like to thank John Taylor for providing photography and videography services. I'm very grateful to the current council members and staff who met with me and answered all my questions. And I'm grateful for the staff and current council for putting on the local government academy. And I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates for putting themselves out there, Belle, Marshall, Andre, and Oliver, all of whom ran positive campaigns focused on the issues of Pleasant Hill and the great tradition we have here. Finally, thank you to all the District 5 residents who voted for me. I'm excited to get to work.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to 10.11, election of new mayor. I'll now invite any public comment.
I apologize. We have public comments that were submitted for this item.
Oh, okay, didn't have that. All right. Oh. We have two. Michelle Lacy again. Where are you? Jeez, I thought you were done. Frequent flyer points for you.
Should have put in for the consent calendar as well, because then I would have had a trifecta and hit them all, because she will see me two more times. So on behalf of the Pleasant Hill Recreation and Park District, I wanted to welcome and congratulate our newest council members. And we, as a district, look forward to working with all five of you collectively. You have elected colleagues across the street, or just kitty-corner across the street. And so Pleasant Hill is lucky to have 10 elected members of offices to serve our wonderful community. And I know there's lots of great work to be done. We still need to figure out how to pay for new park. And so I look forward to working with you and staff, and I know that the Board of Directors does as well. So congratulations and welcome.
Lisa Chow.
I don't get to stand on this side of everything. I'm usually over here. My name is Lisa Chow, and I know all of you well. You may know my boss, Supervisor Ken Carlson, but I'm not here in that capacity today. I'm here as a resident of Pleasant Hill. And I am so thrilled to see this council take on this new identity. A lot of comments were made tonight about how great Pleasant Hill is. Do I really only have 30 seconds? Okay, how great Pleasant Hill is. I know, how great Pleasant Hill is to raise a family, how close-knit we are and all of that. And I personally, and this is not for my work capacity, so I'm sorry, Councilmember Obolinski, I don't know you as well. I raised my family here, and I walked into kindergarten many, many years ago and met Councilmember Noack and Councilmember Sokac. And it is thrilling to see the two of you sit here today and know that your heart, knowing you all these years, your heart is in the right place. And Councilmember Law, representation is something that you don't understand until you see it. And I just want to acknowledge the position you're holding today and the responsibility that it comes with, but also the opportunity. So thank you for even throwing your name in the hat. You're not my council member. I didn't get to vote for you, but I'm really excited to see what you do in the world of representation. So thank you.
Thank you. Anna? All right, I'm not even going to try to pronounce his last name. You're going to have to introduce yourself for the last name. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Anna Toshakova.
Thank you.
And I want to say thank you to Andrei Obolinski. He helped us move from Ukraine during the war and supported us through such a difficult time. And I'm truly grateful for everything that he has done. I want to say that he is a real good father, friend, and he for sure cares about people. Thank you very much. Thank you.
No more cards?
Yeah, no more cards.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to 10.11, election of the new mayor. I'll now invite public comment on the election of the new mayor, 10.11, and election of vice mayor, 10.12. Okay. Oh, Michelle. Oh, you wanted to speak later on? Nope, just pass on that. Okay. Okay. Matt Rin. Oh, I couldn't, I didn't even see where you were.
I've always wanted to make this thing go up. See, look at that.
You're going to use up your entire, you're going to use up your entire.
We got a lifeboat out over here. I never noticed all those years, and so... Just kidding. So for the election of mayor and vice mayor, I think there's no other person deserving right now as Vice Mayor Noack, who's been on the council for 10 years and has just been involved in every aspect of governance of the city and has probably served on every commission or been involved in every commission at some point. Congratulations to the three new council members. I truly see your leadership and your energy, and at this time, I think your day will come. But for tonight, I would ask that you support Vice Mayor Noack to be our new mayor of Pleasant Hill, and that you nominate Zach Schess as vice mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Any more cards?
No more speakers.
Okay. All right. And with that, we will look for a motion for the election of mayor.
I will nominate my April 4th birthday twin, Vice Mayor Sue Noack, as mayor in 2025.
I will second that motion.
Any additional comments? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Law? Yes. Obolinski?
Yes.
Schess?
Yes.
Sokac?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. I will just stay seated. And now, we're looking for the election of vice mayor, and I will use my mayor prerogative and nominate Zach Schess, my birthday twin, April 4. There are years between us, but we are on the same birthday. I will nominate Zach Schess.
I will second that motion.
Okay. You have a motion second. Any additional comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Law? Yes. Obolinski?
Yes.
Schess?
Sure.
Sokac?
Yes.
I won't be that tough on you.
Noack?
Yes. Would you like to make any comments?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I won't make any comments, because we have had more than enough comments tonight, and I'll plenty of time to speak over the next year. So I'll skip my new comments as well. But I would like to invite everybody down to the community room for a cake in celebration of our new council members, our outgoing council members. So please join us there. And council members, first, we have to take a photo in the front of the dais. So with that, thank you very much, everybody, and we're adjourned.